Hello, everybody.
I noticed a couple of lunges that I said until we just oh, Katie said, and he was being here, I see. She left you a snack. There wasn't much left on that bowl. It was scraps. Yeah, there wasn't much left on that bowl. I was like, oh, I'm totally here. Oh, they're they're they love it. Yeah. They got where they tried to go home with their nails. They want to go home. They know who to speak for.
Amen. Oh, we have to say our best job. That's all right.
Hoping that is not true. You're their favorite.
I actually agree for how to say that. Excuse me. No, I'm not. Now, I'll say this. So, my son.
We did a team.
And I'm like, I had a scare of a voice like. The absolute worst experience. Yeah. I have to say another. Yeah, there you go. Then I'm saying like they are.
He's offering to check outside.
My mom had all the stuff for him when she got there. It was all the dogs here. And then two couples in equals came. And they're like, I don't know if he's going to be capable of that situation. No, that's exactly what I'm.
Yo, it's not happening.
No, it's not. Yeah, yeah, so. So, because I'm living on there. Yeah. Yeah, because I'm living on there. I always want to worry this. Like I'm like everyday game. We make sure by new album message. You know what I mean? Sorry, sorry.
Let's go ahead and open up our meeting in a prayer. This is a new clip. Right with. Lord, thank you for allowing us to gather here. We're grateful for the rain that you blessed us with. We ask that you bless our community. We ask that you bless all of our kids as they run the streets tomorrow. We ask for a safe and fun event. Uh, we ask that you watch over our meeting here tonight and bless us here tonight. Jesus name of our prayer. Amen.
Amen. United States of America. United Republic of America. What's your stance? One nation under God. Invisible. With liberty and justice.
All right. We need approval of the agenda. It's a special call. We need to make any additions or changes. Need a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion.
Thank you, sir. A second. All those in favor? All right. We're gonna open this up. For a public hearing on budget. First, let's talk about the budget. And then, um. We'll open it up. Based on our conversation. We had. A couple of conversations last week. There were some conversations about a full rollback. Which brings the millage to a six point five nine three. And the option of a rollback. But a tax increase to a six point nine nine. That's not a tax increase on the millage. That's just a tax increase on property values increasing. Keep the mills the same. We have the budget proposal of seven point one six. That's the same bill rate as we have now, but it doesn't increase the property values. Council. What would y'all like to discuss in front of you? You have a couple of different options and then going to do. Budget number four, option one, that's in your package as well.
Okay, I have looked at these as I encouraged my. Council. Members to do like a deep pour on them. And, um. As I was looking at them, I was looking at, okay, if we add this, it brings this much in. You know, that's math. Um, and so if we do this, then it brings twice as much in. But as I was talking to citizens, um, of Demerist and talking to my mom, who is on a, um, limited budget as well outside the city. But, um, still in kind of the same situation that many of our citizens are in. Um, this is a tough year. Um, it's been a, it's been a tough situation. And I would look to, and I didn't think I would vote for this in this direction. But I would go for the full rollback. Um, while we can. Um, because there will be years that we can't. And we will have to vote different ways. But I think this year. Unless I'm just wrong, um. I think that the full rollback is a good idea. And I'm not running for office. So, um, I don't have anybody in my household running for office. Um, so I'm gonna vote that direction. Um, just for the people of Demerist that are on a fixed income while we can.
Thanks for that.
Well, I am running for office, but, um. Uh. I mean, my mind hasn't changed since the last, since the budget, second budget hearing. I'm still in favor of a full rollback on this. Um, I, I, I guess the press could, could fact quote me on this. But I think every, uh, city around us has either maintained or increased their millage rate this year. So, the fact that we are considering budget where we're gonna have a full rollback speaks to the volume of how we're gonna be careful with taxpayers' money on this. I do have a couple of questions on these two budgets that are presented to us.
So, hold on a moment.
Sure, so we, we got the two bud, two budget options here. That has the full rollback. One is budget op, budget number three, option three. And the other is budget number four, option one. I see that budget number four, option one, has the, uh, police department position reinstated in this at a cost of sixty seven thousand zero eighty one point ninety one. So, this is a position that we feel that, that the staff feel that we need to have.
Yes.
Yes, yes, chief.
Casey and I, James have talked about it and Meg. And, uh, I felt the need to bring that back because what it's gonna do to the budget. It is. Obviously, the police budget is gonna go up by that sixty seven thousand dollars. And where it comes in the play off of here, it's going to come in the point of the increase of the water transfer.
Okay.
Because it got, I got just under, it'll be just under, um. One point two six seven will be the number. And our goal is a million four. So, that's where that money will be coming from.
Is this a position that is currently filled or is it vacant right now?
It, it's filled now.
It, it's filled now. Uh, when Mark asked us to do some cutting. We all know that one of our officers are going to work for the DNR at the end of the year. That was the part I cut.
So, it's still maintaining the same FTE?
It's the same thing that we've already had. We're not adding the position. Just not cutting it.
Got it. All right, so it's still same FTE that we have?
Same.
Okay. Um, the other question I have is, where in the budget does it, is the, uh, contribution for partnership average now?
Let me look in my year to date. And I can tell you where.
While Mark's looking at that, I will say that we have had several, well, not several, but we've had a few, um, citizens come up and speak at the podium about the importance of our police department. And, um. How they and their kids feel about our, um, our police department. And that's not only, um, like Casey and those guys. It's our, uh, our guy at Demerist Elementary. Um, the, uh, principal of that school and our, our very good friends. And, uh, she has done nothing but pour over our policeman over there. She.
What's the policeman's name?
Um.
Joe.
Joe, yeah. Joe, yeah. But anyway, Joe has done a marvelous job, not only like as a policeman doing policeman work, but he has made a lot of relationships with those children and those faculty. And I'm very proud to say that. That's a, he's a, he's a neat character. And they have done nothing but brag on him. So, thank you.
How much, how much is it?
It's five thousand dollars.
Uh, I'd ask council to consider, if we're looking at either one of these two budgets. Uh, my preference right now is reinstating the, I mean, keeping the same police department position. But cutting out that five thousand dollars. I'd ask council to consider that.
Do's and fees.
We can't hear you.
Do's and fees.
Do's and fees.
Do's and fees.
Thank you.
What page is that?
Right here. First page down at the bottom, right here. Um, about three quarters of the way down. We've got, um. Right now, there.
Do's and fees. Twenty thousand, I'd, I'd ask council to consider reducing that to fifteen thousand dollars. That's my only input.
Your conversation of budget number four option one, which is a rollback and reading second. Uh, Andrew, Jimmy, do you have any thoughts?
Well, I'm not running for office, so I just simply budget four option one.
Budget four option one. Andrew, do you have any thoughts on that?
My concern is Slosk, if it doesn't pass, I know in one of the retreats we had, we were talking about they have some mechanical issues that possible failure with pumps in, in those stations.
Slosk doesn't, Slosk, the Slosk that people are voting on now won't have an effect for next year.
Won't have any effect on that at all.
Not on next year.
That's my concern, you know, is that we take, continue taking money from them. Knowing that we do have.
You'll still, you'll still need to collect them in the home. For next year.
I'm, I'm comfortable in this. And, uh, and numbers, um. Where we at, where we are at at this present time in our cash position. And Fletcher and I and Brian, we're making a. We've gone back through the, uh, capital needs. And we're putting together a timeline for twenty twenty six. And we do have money budgeted in the current Slosk. Right now, our Slosk balance is a little over five hundred thousand dollars. And we have a fire truck payment of ninety four thousand dollars due in March. And then we have a forty three thousand dollar car payment, the last police car payment to be made in August. So, if I just take out those. You know, that's gonna lead me around to three fifty, three twenty five. And plus, we're getting in anywhere from thirty three thousand to thirty at eight thousand a month. And that's three to eight thousand dollars over Fletcher.
I may do so, you know, having this, any water customers, it does have a city. And, uh, what if this is, this is. I, I'm gonna go with.
And I will tell y'all that it will be exciting to see. With the city that was doing a full rollback, if y'all continue down that path. Um, as you look at other cities and other counties, uh, just here. That will speak volumes. What we're doing. And I will tell y'all though.
Unfortunately.
We. We still have to do our water rates still in, at the beginning December. So.
That's because of rates that we were paying for our acres.
Correct.
All right. With all that said, we'll open the floor up for a public hearing. This is our last public hearing before we, uh, move to approve the budget. So, we will open the floor up for a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak, please step forward and speak on the budget.
Hey, Patty Davis, one fifty Connecticut Street, Demerist. I am running for office. But I have a couple of questions. Um. So, which item carries the severance for the fire department?
Sorry, what did you say?
Where is the severance packages for the firefighters that are being laid off carried in the budget?
Okay, I'm not getting together. You have to be budget. If it's something we do have, we would do a budget amendment twenty twenty six because if there is severance, it will come out of twenty twenty six budget.
Okay, and so.
In there right now.
Yeah.
You look that funny.
Because it'll be January first when they are, are done. So, when are you all going to talk about that in your meetings? Is it going to be December? January?
I guess this.
I can't tell you right now when we're gonna discuss it in public.
Okay. All right, thanks, gentlemen. The code enforcement, and it was thirteen thousand six hundred dollars. So, that was what, uh, the fire chief was doing is.
The budget that he had given me.
So, since, since the fire department's no longer going to be in existence and the county's going to be doing it. Is that going, that thirteen six hundred going to go away? Are you going to have to hire somebody? Are you gonna, is the county going to do that as part of the agreement?
We haven't made a decision, but we have. Meg and I and Casey have discussed code enforcement. Because it's something that has, has been started and it's something that we need to maintain.
We do.
I'm, I'm, my thought is to look for a part time because it's not an everyday job. It's probably one day in the field and one day doing paperwork in the meantime. And, uh, because part of Daddy's salary was split because our, our budget for the fire chief, when that position was put out there, it was like fifty five thousand dollars. And once I saw Daddy's. Uh, resume with his background in that. I said, well, we could, you know, he indicated he needed the number that we gave him. And I said, well, as long as you're willing to do code enforcement, I can read that number because I will underwrite this under two different ways with that.
Okay, so that can change, it could.
It would be another budget of just a fifty thousand, thirteen thousand dollars. They was paid totally through the fire department.
Right.
There's not a line in his budget or salary. Those were expenses to cover for, you know, he's gotta take the pictures, he's got to send certified mail. He's gotta send everything to Thomas, Thomas and Heather, legal costs and then prepare for court.
So, I was just curious if that's something that the county could do and, you know.
Could.
Yeah, okay.
Those two. But that's a big question. We get to start looking for that. But we, that's on our, it's on our radar with that. I'm just trying to get past December thirty first because Thomas will have his, anything that's currently in the process of going through code enforcement will have to be finished up by December. And then the judge will be told by Thomas, it'll, could be a long time and then we'll come back to this.
Thanks. And one last thing, I know you'd said something about, since we have court here and that has some costs that come with it. Is the court cost that eight thousand dollars, is that because of having, um, traffic court? Uh, I do not have the budget in front of me. I think it was in the general cost expenses. I just was curious about how much it costs us to have traffic court. That's, I think you'd mentioned something about that in previous meetings.
Hundred dollars and.
Okay.
Solicitor is two fifty.
Okay.
So, there's seven fifty. And then, um, Casey, how else? What else are you?
Well, we, we just have officers come. Working because they have to.
Yeah, they're on the clock anyway, just like. Or and then they were there. So, that's, that's the time of that. So, if you take seven fifty times twelve, what is that, Derek? That's not a thousand dollars.
All right.
You haven't had it, you haven't had it till you think it's over.
All right, I just, thank you for clarifying those for me. And I just want to thank you, gentlemen, for considering to keep, you know, have the rollback as being one of those citizens on, uh, fixed income. Yeah, all right, thanks.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Council, do you have anything else you'd like to add? All right, we'll move to close the public hearing for the twenty twenty six budget. And we'll move into approval of the twenty twenty six budget.
I'd like to make a motion to approve budget number four, option number one, with the release of five thousand dollars from the Do's and Fees.
Okay. We have a motion on the table. Do we have a second? All those in favor of move forward with budget number four, option one, which is a full rollback. With, with the police department. Correct. All right. Next, we'll move on to the millage rates since we just voted on the budget. I guess there's a sense in discussing this. Next, we'll move on to the millage rates, as we just voted on the budget, I guess there's other citizens discussing this internally. We'll open this up for a public hearing on the millage rate, we just did pass the budget, which aligns with the full rollback of six point five nine three. Is anyone here to speak on the full rollback? Council, do you have anything you'd like to say in the public hearing for the full rollback? Anybody else have said there in the budget? All right, none's here to speak, we'll here close the final public hearing of the twenty, twenty-five millage rates, and we'll move to the next agenda item of approval of the twenty twenty-five millage rate.
I make a motion to approve a millage rate for twenty twenty-six of six point five nine three mills, which will be a full rollback from, uh, I'm correct, with seven point one six.
Can you correct that a bit, I think you meant the twenty twenty-five millage rate?
Twenty twenty-five.
Yes, all right, we have a motion on the table for the full rollback, and we have a second. All those in favor? Very good. That's gone. Next, we have consideration of, uh, executive session, Thomas.
We need an executive session to discuss personnel and threatened or pending litigation.
Council, we have a motion to go to executive session. I would motion to go to executive session. Do we have a second? Awesome.